It's nine o'clock and welcome to the Lyon County Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment: Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing *9 from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial *6. You can also provide public comment or request supporting materials for this meeting by sending us an email to shannonjuntinen@lyoncounty.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to type "public comment" or request for support materials in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, 89447, but all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at Gray County Road, Lyon County Commission Chambers, 27 South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and electronic devices in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Item one is roll call. And we are all present. Pledge of Allegiance. Audrey, will you lead us?
Sure.
Public participation: No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form of the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The Commission reserves the right to reduce this three-minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the Chair to calendar the matter for a future Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The Chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Item four, review and adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
And look that we adopt today's agenda?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. For possible action, approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read those? Any comments? Okay.
All motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
All second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? So John abstains and everybody else says eh. Presentation and reading of miscellaneous correspondence. Do we have any of that? Okay. Any advisory board reports?
Thank you.
Public hearing items: 8A for possible action. La Casa Development NV tentative subdivision map requested by La Casa Development NV for a tentative subdivision map to create 32 single-family residential dwelling units, townhomes, and seven common areas parcels within a 4.38 acre portion with a 9.37 acre remainder parcel on a 13.75 acre parcel within the RMU Residential Mixed-Use Zoning District, generally located between Haylight Drive and Northgate Drive, Dayton Village Parkway, Dayton, Nevada, APN 029761-01 PLZ 2022-128.
Okay, for the record, this is Rob Peitzel, Senior Planner. If the Community Development Director would like to allow me to co-host, I'll run the presentation.
You should be good. Good to go, Rob.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Again, for the record, Rob Peitzel, Senior Planner. This is an application for a tentative subdivision map. It's for a 4.38 acre portion of a 13.75 acre parcel by La Casa Development NC. The idea is to create 32 single-family residential dwelling units, townhomes, and seven common area parcels within that 4.38 acre parcel, and then leave the remaining 9.37 acres as a remainder parcel. The property is zoned RMU and it is generally located between Haylight Drive and Northgate Drive and the Dayton Village Parkway, as you can see in the exhibit on the right. As noted, the property owner is La Casa Development NV. They've been owners of the property for quite a time now, and as you may know, they've been developing attainable housing types within this area through that RMU zoning district. Again, just the assessor's parcel information showing the remainder parcel that was created by the subdivision of the lots located to the lower left in the right-hand detail. Access, as you can see, to the site from US 50 will be provided either via Haylight to Retail Road to US 50 or via Eddie's Lane to Northgate Drive to Dayton Village Parkway to Fortune Drive and US 50. Underneath, you can see the parcel itself, the 13-acre parcel, and then the 4.38-acre development site is outlined in black on the detail to the right. Stafford notes there are no special geologic features or drainage features within the boundaries. The prohibited development, it is a period that's already been graded with some building pads, some street patterns, and storm drainage facilities. It was site graded, mass graded prior to abandonment at the start of the 2008 recession, and again, left some rough building pads, a rough street pattern, and then some drainage facilities. The site has been used for the storm drainage management as well as temporary construction yard for the property owners, other development projects within the surrounding area. However, it's currently undeveloped with the exception of a storm drainage detention basin that you can see outlined in the red in the right. The site itself is currently designated as Xunshaded, as indicated on the firm panel. It is within the service area of both the municipal water and municipal sewer service area for Lyon County Utilities Department. And you can see in this slide, the existing water system and what's being developed in the light blue is the water system for the existing development to the left and lower left of the subject site itself. There is therefore a logical extension of services. What you're seeing here is the sewer service details. Again, the darker green is the existing and the lighter olive is more of the service infrastructure that's being installed by the developer for the other project to the left and lower left of the subject site. As noted, the subject site itself is zoned RMU Residential Mixed-Use. That was accomplished in June of 2019. Changed the area from NR2 to RMU. And as you can see, the existing surrounding zoning is a mixture of NR2, which is a multifamily zoning, NR1, which is a small lot, single-family residential development, and then C2. Under the residential mixed-use zoning, it does allow, as you can see in the left, a variety of housing options, including small lots, single-family residential subdivisions. It allows for attached or detached multifamily units, condominiums, townhomes, apartments, live-work units, attached to commercial development as well. It can either be all residential or can have a portion of the development as commercial itself, has to have a minimum net parcel size of 6,000 square feet, and can have a maximum density of 18 dwelling units per acre. It has to be located and does implement the suburban residential land use designation of the master plan in suburban character districts. And again, it's supposed to provide a mixture within the RMU zoning of complementary design and located residential uses. That includes a mixture of single-family and multifamily uses, attached and detached condos, and special living facilities. And it's supposed to be in an area that provides for services, including retail. And off on the right, you can see the existing standards for development for a multifamily. Townhomes would be considered attached multifamily development. The map itself is shown on the right-hand side. Again, they're creating 32 single-family residential dwelling units, townhomes, and seven common area parcels within that acreage. You can see the individual lots themselves as well as the common areas. We would note that that access through the middle of the site will be a private drive and is part of the common area and will be maintained by the Homeowners Association. To provide a little bit of understanding of the breakdown of the individual parcels and how they'll be developed, you can see the project site as itself, the total town home lot areas, the right-of-way areas, common areas, project density, and then the average unit size. And on the right-hand side, you can see the breakdown of the area of what will be common area, what will be used as driveways and access to the units themselves, what will be the footprint of the units themselves, and then the backyard areas of the units. The Appken also includes some conceptual designs of the exterior of the buildings as well as footprints. Then the Stafford report itself goes into the findings. And staff is recommending approval based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. We would like to note that the rezoning that was done in 2019 did include this area as to be developed for townhome units and was proposing a maximum of 32 units within this area. The zoning was not a commitment for any type of specific development, but still had to meet the RU zoning standards for providing a mixture of units within the entire area. And with that, I'll start presenting and try to answer any questions. I do believe that the Appken's representative is online as well and should be able to answer any questions, and that it would be Lisa Nash with Christie Corp. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Audrey, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have a question. Did I see that some of these units were designated for senior housing?
I believe that this particular area within the overall La Casa development site, the entire 19 acres, was not designated specifically for age-restricted. I believe that's another area within the project itself.
Thank you, Rob.
Loretta, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
John? Michael?
Rob, I do have a concern with parking for this place. Basically, what I've seen is that you're allowing parking for two vehicles per unit.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I was just concerned because these are, it looks like, three-bedroom units. You know, for external parking, where is that going to occur out on the street?
We would note that the conceptual designs did include a driveway to the units themselves as well as attached garages. So we do believe that there is sufficient parking to meet the requirements per the parking requirements in the code. I think the developer could further explain. Again, you know, these are going to be smaller units. I don't know that you'll have, basically, adults coming in here. I think it'll be starter homes for the most part. That seems to be what's been the purchasers of the existing single-family residential. But again, I would defer that to the Appken's representative.
Hi. Would you like?
Go ahead and address the question.
Okay, thank you. I'm Lisa Nash with Christie Corp. We do plan to have driveways on each unit and two-car garages, which will address the parking, and I do believe one of the streets will be wide enough to allow on-street parking. And that more than exceeds code.
Okay, because what I have here, it says one-car parking or one-car garage, I'm sorry.
Then we've made a change since. It is intended to have two-car garages for each unit.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yeah, if I had seen that in the first place.
Sean?
None.
Connie?
So you hope cost of government, this is one actually about 60%. Units will expand from phase 2B by similar townhomes on 2B to allow some new feature car garages. Apartment is a little wider than I did have, so the apartment is a little wider off the street. You have somebody retention on, you saw a red circle on both maps, other party over there on the side that you could use. You have a building in the parking, but it shouldn't be.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this matter?
I don't have public comment. I just wanted to ask Mr. Holt if he's had a chance to look at all of the conditions and findings and if you agree with them.
Yes, they're all standard conditions. We've had work with the fire lines, fire sprinklers, but that's part of the code, but we had to build in our last two fourplexes, get up to phase 2B that wasn't too faithful. So I don't have any objection.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? If not, I'll hear a motion.
All motion. Based on the review of the aforementioned findings, Lyon County Planning Commission recommends approval of the request by La Casa Development Nevada for tentative subdivision map to create 32 single-family residential dwelling units, townhomes, and seven common area parcels within a 4.3 acre portion with a 9.37 acre remainder parcel on a 13.75 acre parcel within the RMU Residential Mixed-Use Zoning District, generally located between Haylight Drive and Northgate Drive in Dayton Village Parkway, Dayton, Nevada, APN 02976101 PLZ 2022-128, subject to the following conditions of approval, 1 through 27.
All second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I just would like to thank Lisa Nash for sharing the octopus on her chair there.
I didn't realize it was showing till just now. Thank you very much.
Okay, item 8B for possible action. Lyon County Code Amendment. Request for a Lyon County Code Amendment for Title 15 to amend Lyon County Code Title 15, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code, Chapters 15.320, Section 3, Table 15.320-1, Chapter 15.332, Section 3, Table 15.320-5, Chapter 15.336, Section 3, Table 15.336-1, and Chapter 15.1200, Section 4, to define and allow for private use airfields and general aviation airports and other matters pertaining thereto.
Andrew, for the record and passing. This is all, there we go. Guess I better state that again. Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director, for the record. Got a pair of ordinances this morning. This first one is related to the second one. And that's dealing with airports. We were requested to put together an ordinance relating to airport influence zones, which you'll see here in a minute, by Commissioner Henderson. But when we were doing the research for it, we realized that airports were not included in Title 15, however, they were included in Title 10. So technically, airports are not currently allowed in Lyon County, and the existing airports are non-conforming uses. So obviously, we had to bring forth an ordinance to fix that problem and put back in Title 15 what was in Title 10. So that's, the slide says here. So the proposed ordinance defines and allows both private and general aviation airports in Title 15, both will be subject to a conditional use permit. It modifies the land use table in 15321 to allow private airports in the following zoning districts, subject to approval of conditional use permit. So they would be allowed in RR20, RR10, agriculture, non-agricated agriculture, resource land, public land, and tourist commercial. And then it also, the ordinance also modifies the land use table in 15320.5 to allow general aviation airports and the public facilities zoning district, subject to approval of conditional use permit. So just to kind of run through the language and the ordinance real quick. Provide some definitions. So this was added to 15.1200.04.2E, and it's private, for private airfield, private use airfields. And it defines them as civilian airfields under private ownership for private use only, private use airfields, meet the following criteria, and they're designated by the Nevada Department of Transportation Airport and Airport System Plan as having either an access or backcountry role. And then general aviation airports, similar to the previous definition, defines them as civilian airports that do not serve scheduled passenger service, are typically known as general aviation airports. General aviation airports usually serve private aircraft and small aircraft charter operations. General aviation airports meet the following criteria. They're designated by the Nevada Department of Transportation Airport and Airport System Plan as having a general role. Here's where we updated the land use table, 15320.1, for private use airports, and you can see that it makes all the uses as a conditional use. And then general aviation airport, similar for public facilities, it makes that a conditional use. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Audrey, do you have any questions?
No.
Loretta?
No, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any, do you, John? Michael?
No.
Sean?
None.
Connie? That was easy.
All right.
Yeah, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Or so that's in participation.
Oh, sorry. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing that, and I'll take a motion.
All motion. Based on the above findings, Lyon County Planning Commission votes to forward a recommendation of approval of the request for zoning tax amendment, amending Lyon County Title Code Title 15, Land Use and Development Code, Chapters 15.320, Section 3, Table 15.320-1, Chapter 15.320, Section 3, Table 15.320-5, Chapter 15.336, Section 3, Table 15.336-1, and Chapter 15.1200, Section 4, to define and allow for private use airfields and general aviation airports and other matters pertaining thereto the Board of Commissioners.
To the Board of.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, whatever, all second.
Sure. I talked about it a little tight at the end.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8C for possible action. Lyon County Code Amendment. Request for a Lyon County Code Amendment for Title 15 to amend Lyon County Code Title 15 to add Chapter 15.212 Airport Influence Areas to identify when construction of new development or alteration of existing development requires identification of potential navigation hazards on properties located within airport influence areas as identified in the Lyon County Master Plan.
All right. Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director, for the record. So this is the second of the two ordinances. This was the one that was requested by Commissioner Henderson. So this adds language to Title 15 regarding development within airport influence areas as designated by the 2020 Master Plan. Airport influence areas were also in the 2010 Master Plan. So that part's not new. Ordinance does aim to alert developers that new construction or alteration of existing developments will be required to review the proposed building height and determine whether filing in a FAA Form 7460-1 is required with FAA to identify potential navigation hazards on properties within airport influence areas as designated by the 2020 comprehensive master plan. This is an example of an airport influence area. This is the Silver Springs Airport. So it shows just how it's laid out in the master plan. There's one of these for each of the airports within Lyon County.
just how it's laid out in the master plan. There's one of these for each of the airports within Lyon County. So basically, development within that will will have to follow this. So the proposed ordinance language, the first part of this defines the airport influence areas or talks about the airport influence areas. And it says the airport influence area is designated within the countywide comprehensive master plan by intended to promote land use compatibility. The designation recognizes that the benefits of potential adverse impacts that may occur within certain distances from general aviation facilities and provides a framework to minimize these impacts as well as protect the safety and efficiency of aircraft operations. The second part says that the purpose is to identify when construction of new developments or alteration of existing development requires identification of potential navigation hazards on properties located within airport influence areas as identified in the master plan. And the second part of this deals with the structural height limitations. And basically, what it says is the height limitations within the airport influence areas shall be limited to the maximum height as listed in individual zoning districts, development standards listed in chapters 15, 310, 40 through 15, 316. So I had a 44 as a type of inclusive in chapters 15, 330, 00. If a parcel is located within an airport influence area as depicted in the adopted Lyon County Master Plan and a development includes a structure which would propose to exceed 35 feet in height above ground level, then the developer shall be required to process a Form 60 or 7460-1 with FAA. That's already a pretty standard practice, but we wanted to make sure that we had something in code so the developers that were taking a look at things know exactly what the requirements would be.
Thank you. Audrey, do you have any questions?
Yeah, this is not intended to MP or negate new development in an airport. Is that correct?
No, yeah, that is correct. It's not intended to.
Thank you.
Loretta?
No.
And I can provide a little bit of clarification. A 7460-1 form, basically, that's notifying the FAA of the of a potential hazard in the area so that they can let the folks that are flying in and out know those potential hazards. They can put some other requirements on there like lighting, depending on what comes back in the review, but that's that's essentially what that is about.
I have a question. We recently approved a zoning change at the west end of the Silver Springs Airport. Is this going to impact anything that they were trying to do?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to check. They haven't filed any building plans with us, so I I don't think so, but essentially, what it's doing is it's still limiting them to the allowable height within the the zoning district as is. So those limits are already in place.
If I remember correctly, wasn't that there were planning and putting
convenience store.
A convenience store and an RV park.
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as that convenience store doesn't exceed that 35 foot height.
Yeah. And even then, they would, if they wanted to go over it, they would have to file.
Yeah, just file that.
Form and they would be required to do a CP anyway.
Thank you.
There's a whole process that.
John, do you have any questions?
Oh, I have a similar question. Whether or not that would create any non-compliant parcels that are already existing with buildings on them, like I know around the Dayton Air Park and all that, I'm just curious if this is going to create any non-compliance out of existing development.
So the original draft of this ordinance had a whole section on non-conforming structures and we ended up taking that out for that reason. It would maybe have to defer to Rob Pizel on that. I know he's still on. But I I believe that I don't believe it would be in the issue. We were specifically trying to do that.
Yeah, and for the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner, Andrew's right, we took that out. The primary driver to remove that was we didn't want to create a a building that suddenly was designated as non-conforming with the current code. When all we were trying to do was to, you know, for any new development or any alteration of existing developments, they'd be flagged to to provide that notification to the FAA to inform pilots utilizing either those private use airports or the general aviation airports of any potential navigation hazards on their inbound or outbound approaches to the individual airports. The, by removing that non-conforming language, basically, we're just saying any newer existing development that proposes, any existing development that proposes an alteration. So we're not designating specifically any building as non-conforming to the new code. Just to avoid that situation.
Yeah, and yeah, as Rob pointed out, it's it's really just relating to the new new development that happens. I know that, for example, the some of the newer buildings out there at the Dayton Airport, they had to file the 7460-1 anyway. So that's a requirement of the FAA.
And and as, again, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner, as an example, one of the new inhabitants of the industrial buildings on the south side of the Air Park Estates airstrip in Dayton was proposing to put up a outdoor storage silo that exceeded 35 feet in height. So in this instance, in that instance, we we asked that they file that that form with the FAA. This just codifies that. Again, it didn't propose that and this ordinance won't make that a non-conforming use. It'll just require them to alert the FAA that any alteration, in this case, the alteration of an existing building may provide a hazard and it leaves it up to the FAA to make that determination because, again, they're the experts in the field, not not staff.
Thank you, Rob. Michael?
No issues.
Sean?
None.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
We'll make it. Based on the above findings, Lyon County Planning Commission votes to forward a recommendation of approval of the request for zoning zoning text amendments to the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we recess to convene as the Lyon County Public Lands Management Advisory Board. Item nine, public participation. Note, action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Does anyone have any public participation for public lands? Okay, item 10, action items. Do we have any action items? Okay, item 11, staff update on public lands bill.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director. No update this time. We're still working through various things on our end, but I don't have anything. But there hasn't been a lot of activity since our last.
Thank you. Board member comments. Does anyone have any comments? Any future agenda items? We're again open for public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Planning Commission. Item 15, staff comments.
Andrew Haskin, once again. I just want to provide an update on the actions that the board took at their April 7 meeting. The final map for Traditions Village 1 Phase 1 was approved, five to zero. The conditional use permit for Smith Valley Farms LLC, their plot, was approved five to zero. The conditional use permit for North Lyon LLC and NV Energy was approved five to zero. That was for the communications tower. The master plan amendment for the county's miravita property at the end of Dayton Valley Road was approved five to zero. And the tentative subdivision map for Vidler Water for 49 lots in Dayton was approved, read it.
Thank you. Any commissioner comments?
I via Zoom, I attended the public. It was the training. Thank you. It was good. I learned a lot.
Yes.
I can, you know, you attend so many of them, you think you're not going to learn anything, you do.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, last chance for public participation. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Any public participation? Seeing none, we are adjourned.